Good afternoon, this is Board. I'd like to welcome you to the Public Board Meeting of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners. Just a reminder to folks who are joining, if you haven't yet, please mute your phone. I'm going to do a roll call first to identify the board members who are on this call. Going to ask board members to please remember that when you're speaking for the record, to identify yourself. Commissioner Bondima? Okay, I see you Commissioner Bondima. Commissioner Brooks is excused this evening. Commissioner Frank?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner James is also excused this evening. Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Sykes? I see you, okay. And I'm here. So we have eight commissioners here. Is there a motion to reopen the meeting? And I'm going to ask commissioners if you'll unmute while we do these motions, so that'll make it easier for us as I do the roll call. Is there a motion to reopen the meeting?
So moved, Bondima.
Thank you. Second?
Frank.
Second, Richardson.
I have Frank, thanks a lot. All in favor? Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Reed?
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Sykes? Can you unmute Commissioner Sykes? Thank you, okay. And I'm in favor. So that's eight in favor and no opposed or abstentions, two absent. Motion passes. I'd like to take time right now to recognize the passing of city school students. The piece in terms of the group of students that I'm going to read this evening is really, quite frankly, very disturbing and sad. All of these students come from one of our schools, from Excel Academy High Schools. I'm going to ask in addition to the students that we please keep in mind the entire school family to have lost five students this early in the school year. Sahi Rashad Brunson was a ninth grader at Excel Academy High School. He looked forward to graduating, and we know that the school community will miss him. Joshauna Kelly Taylor was an 11th grader at Excel Academy High School. She always described herself as a great leader, strong personality, and effective communicator. Her after-graduation plans were to attend college and major in law. She wanted to become an attorney. She was a great asset to Excel Academy High School and its community. Deandre Lamar Blackwell was a 10th grader at Excel Academy High School. He also looked forward to graduating. The community, the school community will miss Deandre. Maquis Escard Darden was a 12th grader at Excel Academy High School. He was looking forward to graduating this year. And Darius Aaron Sample was a 10th grader at Excel Academy High School. He enjoyed making his friends laugh during lunch. He made it a point to knock on Principal Young's door every day to let her know that he was attending school. Daily, he shared and brought Principal Young butter crunch cookies from the school store. Darius had great leadership qualities. He participated weekly in the SEL male group and Mr. Johnson and with Mr. Johnson and Mr. Reed. Darius loved shoes. He especially loved these red Doc Martens that he thought went with all his jeans and outfits. The Excel Academy High School community will miss all of these students. And we offer our sympathy to these students, to their school, to their families, and ask that you please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the prior open session meetings?
So moved.
I heard Commissioner Frank, is there a second?
Second, Bondima.
Thank you. And those in favor? Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Sykes? Commissioner Sykes? I don't know whether, I'm not seeing him, I'm having trouble hearing. Okay.
He's, it might be a lag, he's unmuted.
Okay.
It's video.
Okay. Okay, I'm in favor. Can you, can you? Okay. No opposing, no abstentions, so that is eight in favor, two absent. The motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the closed session summaries?
So moved, Richardson.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second, Bondima.
Thank you. And those who are in favor? Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yeah.
And I'm in favor, and that's no one opposed or abstaining, that's seven in favor and two absent. And that motion also passes. Thank you. And move to the Board Chair comments. This is the, in the second meeting of the month, and so we will be honoring our retirees who have 30-plus years of experience. We believe there are three retirees who are joining us this evening. We had RSVP for three of them. Is Stephen Holloway on with us? So Mr. Holloway, would you let us know? Okay. Well, Mr. Holloway began working with Baltimore City Schools on December 1st, 1980. He most recently served as a teacher for Murgenthaller Vocational Technical High School. He faithfully served the children of Baltimore City Public Schools for 39 years. Has Mr. Charles Funn joined? It must be the beautiful day that everybody decided to stay outside. But Mr. Funn began working with Baltimore City Schools on October 15th, 1975, and he most recently served as a teacher at, for the Paul Lawrence Dumbbar School, High School. He faithfully served the children of Baltimore for 44 years. Congratulations. Is Melissa Jones on with us? I'm striking out here, huh? Okay. Ms. Jones began working with Baltimore City Public Schools on July 19th, 1976. She most recently served as secretary from Arabia Park Elementary Middle School. Melissa Jones faithfully served the students of Baltimore City Public Schools for 44 years. Congratulations. And finally, this, our last honoree, Marion Turner, we knew was not able to join us, but she began her employment with Baltimore City Public Schools on February 26th, 1986. And she most recently served at Carver Vocational Technical High School as a special education teacher. Marion Turner faithfully served the students of Baltimore City Schools for 34 years. Congratulations to all of these retirees. Thank you for the faithful service to our students, and we wish you a wonderful, restful, and fantastic retirement. I'd like to also now address some concerns that the Board has received regarding dialogue during public comment. For over a year, it's been the practice of the Board to listen only during public comment. We feel this practice ensures equity between all public comment participants. And we encourage, however, everyone who can to take advantage of opportunities to engage with us in other ways such as the forums, our committee meetings, and the work sessions that the Board has. As always, if you have specific questions and that you'd like to have followed up, please submit them to the, to our Board exec, and that email is schoolboard@bcps.k12.md.us. I'm also excited to be able to give you an update tonight on the Board's current strategic planning process. In 2011, the Board began strategic planning work to create a new vision, mission, and strategic priorities. The expected outcomes of this work would set clear goals for the district, improve students' academic achievement, and increase community involvement in our schools, among other goals. With the help of the invaluable input received from the community stakeholders, in 2015, the Board was able to adopt the Excellence and Equity Five Years Strategic Plan. That plan incorporated the new vision, mission, and strategic priorities and set a roadmap for the next five years. With the final year of this plan approaching, the Board has decided to take a fresh look at the current vision, mission, and priorities. The Board Strategic Planning Committee has produced proposals updating them for relevance, for simplicity of language, and the shifting landscape of our children's needs. We're now moving into a phase to receive community input on the proposals. On October 5th, we'll be releasing the proposals on our website along with a short survey. The survey will run from October 5th through October 13th. We'd like to ask everyone to please take the survey and share it with your network. The results will be invaluable in ensuring that the final product accurately reflects the priorities of our students, parents, guardians, teachers, staff, and other stakeholders. We look forward to embarking on this process together and hearing from all of you. That ends my comments as Board Chair, and at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Santa Lisa for CEO comments.
Thank you very much, Chair Chinia, I appreciate that. Just as a way of getting started this morning, I'm going to invite Chief Grant Skinner for this evening's PEP agenda.
Good evening, Dr. Santa Lisa and Commissioners. We have one appointee on tonight's PEP, and it is Kelly Gonzalez, co-director and instructor for Program Development and Operations at the Gilman School, is appointed Director for Social Studies, Fine Arts, and World Languages effective September 23rd. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, excuse me, Chief Grant Skinner. First, I would like to begin this evening by giving just a big shout out to our staff and teachers on the successful launch of virtual learning in the first two weeks of the school year. I have had the opportunity to visit virtually classrooms throughout the last two weeks. Today, I was at Sinclair Lane Elementary School and really enjoyed the time, and the work that folks were putting in was evident there. And really just want to say how pleased I've been with the enthusiasm of teachers and students as they adapt to this new environment. I want to thank the CEO/Teacher/Advisory Group. I got a chance to meet with them yesterday, we'll be meeting weekly, and just their insights as some of our district's strongest teachers have been very valuable throughout the process, but I think are going to be crucial over the next few weeks. So I want to thank them as well. I know that the call volume on our parent hotline has been high as families and students have negotiated the technical aspects of distance learning. I will tell you that even as a city school's parent, as well as a CEO, you know, I definitely understand how even when you think you know a little something about technology and computers, it can still be challenging. The IT department really has acted quickly to increase our capacity on the hotline and worked to significantly decrease wait times. So we're down from 46 minutes to 25 minutes, and we are going to continue to push for that to be even lower as we really work on getting your calls answered, your issues resolved. I also want to thank school-based staff, from principals, who at buildings are taking parents' walk-up. I talked to Principal Woodhouse as an example today, and a parent's hotspot stopped working, and she brought her child in. Principal Woodhouse, literally the student was there, had class with the team while his hotspot was worked on. So just want to really thank, and there are numerous examples of that throughout the district. So just want to thank principals and school teams that are at schools that are providing that kind of real-time support for families, it is not going unnoticed. I'd also like to give an update on our progress in distributing laptops and hotspots. To date, we have distributed 36,000 laptops to students. We have about 10,000 laptops on hand for distribution at schools, and another 8,000 laptops are being distributed to schools this week. So far, 6,000 hotspots have been distributed to students, and we have about 7,000 additional hotspots on hand to distribute in schools. And I'm very pleased to report that given really the yeoman's effort, that the real push from our IT team, our distribution team, school leaders, and teams that are at schools, we're pleased to report that the increase from last week's login at approximately 65%, about 60, between 65, 67% this week, as of today, the overall student login was 79%, which is definitely a great improvement. We're proud of this progress, and we simultaneously acknowledge that we have a long way to go. And we need to be making sure that every student has access to the technology, the login information, and then once that occurs, that every student really does log in every day. I got a chance to experience today with a first-grade teacher who's doing wonderful work with her foundations and phonemic awareness. And as we've heard, you know, when, when a young person doesn't have stable internet, a lot of activities become even more challenging, including, you know, trying to make your initial and final letter sound. So if you know of families that are challenged, like some that I had the chance to interact with today, please do let them know to contact their school leader, their school principal, so that we can make sure we get them a working hotspot. I also want to remind everyone that all students are required to comply with appropriate immunizations per the order of the State Department of Education. And we still have too many students that we will not be able to count, even though they are attending school, they're part of school. We will not be able to count them as part of our enrollment. That does generate the amount of funding we have as a school district, and our ability to, you know, to have them counted as part of the enrollment, even if students are here. So we have 3,174 students as of today that are still out of compliance, not because they're not logging in or anything else, but just because they do not have their immunizations. And so last year at this time, we had about 1,800 students left to go. This year, as of today, we have 3,100 students. So just want to again note for families that there will be a free walk-in clinic. No appointment required this Saturday at the University of Maryland from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m., excuse me, at 120 Penn Street. There, if you cannot make that free clinic, we just continue to encourage you to contact your health provider or call the City Health Department or the Rails Clinic at KIP. And we have made arrangements to provide free rides on Lyft and Uber. If you need them, please contact either the immunization liaison at your school or Dr. Fink for more information. And then just want to remind people that next Monday, City Schools in Baltimore City Wreckin' Parks will open our Student Learning Centers. We're very excited about this, given some of the need that we have heard from our families and in-person space for approximately 1,000 students, grades kindergarten through fifth, who will be able to complete their lessons at 15 locations. Just want to thank all of the non-instructional city school staff that's really coming out to support this, along with our partners at Baltimore City Wreckin' Parks. Students were selected to participate through a weighted lottery based on need and selection criteria. We are happy at the large number of students from homeless families that we're also able to accommodate, as well as other students from prioritized groups. The list of participating schools is on our website. And then, finally tonight, I just want to acknowledge that last Friday, I sent a letter to all City Schools employees, City Schools employees concerning our financial system. And I just want to emphasize that the letter was not intended to alarm anyone, but I really do want to keep everyone informed of our fiscal reality at this moment. And so in the spirit of transparency, as well as respect for our staff members as professionals, I am, I continue to be very proud of our response to the COVID-19 pandemic throughout the past, past six to seven months. But it has also led to unavoidable expenses over the course of the past six months. We've talked about some of those tonight, including 55,000 laptops for students, 15,000 hotspots, large quantities of centrally purchased cleaning supplies, and among other things. And while we have received several COVID-related grants, there's a gap that remains between expenses incurred and grant funding. So we really are doing our work to prepare as we look towards a period of financial uncertainty beyond the current fiscal year, and the significant revenue reductions at the city level and the state level that could negatively impact city schools' resources in the future. Even as we, you know, mobilize around the Kerwin funding, we also recognize that that current legislation triggers the delay in implementation of Kerwin funding if state revenue decreases beyond certain limits. So just very forthrightly, taking actions like freezing hiring and other things allows us to conserve resources, make up some of the difference between grants and expenses, and to conserve resources in a way that will allow us kind of maximum ability to hold the core of teaching and learning as untouched as possible. So I do remain hopeful for, you know, that additional funding might come through, through either legislative action at the state or federal level. But we also have to assume, and I have to assume, and take action because they may not come through. And so we are really acting in this way to preserve our financial flexibility, and we are doing everything in our power, both myself, the Board, central team, to balance our obligations as fiscal stewards, also with our determination to safeguard the well-being of our schools. That concludes my remarks for this evening, and I will turn it back to you, Chair Chinia.
Thank you, Dr. Santa Lisa. And also I want to thank you, Mr. Grant Skinner, for making the announcement from PEP because I overlooked some action that we need to do, so I'm going to double back and ask if there is a motion to approve the personnel and quasi-judicial matters that we have on our agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed, is there a second?
Second, Richardson.
Thank you. Those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah.
And I'm in favor, that this motion passes, that's seven in favor and two absent. Thank you very much. And at this point, I'm going to ask that we have And at this point, I'm going to ask that we have our first information and discussion item, which is a presentation, which is the first reader for Policy EGAD Intellectual Property.
Good evening. This is Sally Robinson in the Office of Legal Counsel. Good evening, Chair Chinia, members of the board, and Dr. Santelisus. I'm with the Office of Legal Counsel, and I'm here with some of my colleagues from the Teaching and Learning Office to present Policy EGAD Intellectual Property for its first reading. This is a new policy. It does not replace a board rule. There is, however, just so that the board and members of the public know, that there is some relevant language regarding intellectual property in the board's policy on acceptable use. There's some basic language in that policy regarding fair use. It says that City Schools' technology will comply with licensing and fair use agreements. Also, in administrative regulation, EGDRA, there's some brief language regarding the concept of work made for hire. So the timing, the other thing that we want the board to understand is that the timing of this policy is really significant. Because of the COVID-19 pandemic, it's relevant to the district's current situation with online and virtual learning. It's a key policy that the district needs to have in place to support the virtual instruction that we're doing. And we had to move quickly over the summer to respond to the situation and draft the materials that are before you tonight. There are options available to teachers in school districts and online learning that are compliant with copyright law while making content available to our students. One of the tools is the Teach Act, which I'll talk about more later. That's the Technology, Education, and Copyright Harmonization Act from 2002. And of course, there's the use of already licensed materials. And one of the things that we wanted to also point out is that, given the curricular materials that are currently available to the district's teachers, the need for vetting and fair use analysis should hopefully be quite rare. So the next slide deals with changes since the, if we can go back a slide. Back one more, sorry. Okay, so, changes, I'm sorry, there's, something's out of order. But we have changes since the Policy Committee meeting back in August. The, the, when we met with the Policy Committee in August, we made changes based on their feedback. We added two definitions regarding, one for employee and another for phono record. And the language that had been in the implementation strategies regarding agreements with vendors has been relocated to the regulation. Changes made to the regulation include additional detail that the Policy Committee requested regarding student work product. Also, in several places, we added language reminding, reminding staff to remember to determine whether or not the materials that they're looking to use are already available, either from a school-based purchase or one maybe at the district level. We also inserted placeholders that, once they've been verified, will direct teachers and staff where they can seek assistance. And also, as we discussed at the Policy Committee meeting, we, we created some additional documents that will help guide staff. So first is a form that can be used when somebody needs, and the district needs to seek permission from a copyright holder to use their material. And also importantly, we created a worksheet that will help guide the fair use analysis and decision-making that teachers will sometimes have to do, including documenting that decision. And also, a, when necessary, a public performance license. We added language about that. Basically providing instructions on how to obtain a license, if and when it's ever really necessary, and also how to learn about films that are in the public domain. So now I've caught up to where we are in the slides to the policy purpose. So, yep, thanks, Jo. So as mentioned at the outset, there is no current board rule or board policy that is focused on intellectual property. There is, however, as I mentioned, basic language in the Technology Acceptable Use Policy about copyrights, licensing, and the concept of work made for hire. So this policies will, this policy will provide more detailed guidance to staff and students regarding complying with intellectual property rights, most especially copyright. So on to policy standards. So we start out in the policy in Section 3A, basically setting forth the basic principles of copyright, the protection of rights of authors and creators of original works. These copyright holders receive exclusive rights under the law to control how their work can be used. In some instances, City Schools might actually have procured a license to use the copyright-protected works. And so, in this time of online or remote learn, virtual learning, City Schools should review its existing licenses to see whether they extend to distribution in electronic form. The policy also talks about, or sets out, that there are certain works that are not subject to copyright protection. And that includes works authored by the federal governments and also works authored before 1923. So next up is information on fair use. The language about fair use is found in Section 3B of the policy and 2A of the regulation. Fair use is a, is a, I'm sorry, fair use is a well-known, I'm just realizing that the PowerPoint is from the Policy Committee meeting. So what I've done in this, in the PowerPoint that I had was to combine the language that's found in the policy and the regulations. So hopefully, it's not going to be too confusing. So fair use is a well-known limitation on the exclusive rights that are granted to copyright holders. It was created in case law, but eventually became incorporated into the Copyright Act itself. So under certain circumstances, it allows educators limited use of copyrighted materials, but without having to first request permission from a copyright holder. Typically, what happens in fair use is a copyright holder will allege or claim that someone has infringed on their rights and basically alleging that someone's using their work in violation of their exclusive rights. The accused would then argue in their defense that their use was actually fair. There are four factors in fair use that judges will look at. Those factors are the purpose and character of the use, the nature of the copyrighted work, the amount and substantiality of the portion used, and the fourth factor is the effect of the use upon the potential markets for or the value of the copyrighted work. And what makes fair use difficult or tricky is that there are no bright-line rules associated with it. Each situation has to be analyzed based on those four factors and based on the unique facts of the situation or the potential use. The regulation starts with a reminder to staff to, before they even embark on the fair use analysis, is to see, are the sought materials already available, either from a school, school-level purchase or from a district-level purchase? The regulation then, after that reminder, then goes on to provide details about fair use and how the four factors are analyzed. I'm going to focus on the first and the fourth factors, because those are typically the ones that judges will focus on the most. Again, the first factor is purpose and character of the use. How was the work going to be used? Judges typically are going to favor use that's non-commercial, educational, scientific, or historical. But if you, you could have maybe an educational or scientific use, but if it were used for commercial purposes, it might not be considered fair use. An example would be, let's say, using an image of a painting found in an art history book that would likely be fair use if the teacher were making a scholarly commentary on that painting. But if the teacher were to use that same image or if the person were to use that same image on an advertisement for an unrelated product, that would more than likely weigh against the use being fair. Another example would be a teacher photocopying an entire novel for the students in the teacher's class. That would not weigh in favor of fair use, even if it were educational. Another consideration under fair use that's come about via case law is whether or not the purpose and character of the use is transformative. Meaning, did the alleged infringer make a new statement using the work? Another example of something that might be transformative, if an artist were to take a portion of another artist's copyrighted painting and incorporate that portion into their own work and transform it and make a commentary on it, that would be a legal, that could be a legally protected activity because it's transformative. The fourth factor, as I mentioned, is the effect of use on a, the potential market value of the copyrighted work and what is the impact on the work, or the economic impact on the work. The attention here is to strike a balance between the benefit the public would derive if the use were permitted and the personal gain that the copyright owner would receive if the use is denied. So this consideration can go beyond the creator or author's past intentions or the means by which they currently are exploiting their work. An example that we talked about at the Policy Committee last month is, let's say, a photograph is adopted to, onto a wooden sculpture. In this particular case, the court recognized the, that there was an existence of a market for the new uses of the photograph on that sculpture. And the court held that the unauthorized use of the photo in that wooden sculpture undermines the potential market that the copyright owner held. And so, as we talked about at the Policy Committee last month, we've created a fair use tool with additional instructions. And we provided that to the board earlier this month. Basically, it's a worksheet that will assist teachers when they're making these determinations as to whether or not their use is fair. And it also will allow them, as they're working their way through that decision-making process, to document their decision-making. And again, it also starts out with another reminder to staff that before they even embark on this, look to see if the materials being considered are already available. The worksheet includes each of the four factors with various criteria to consider, specific examples for each one of them, to help the, the staff member make a note whether or not it weighs in favor of the use being fair or against. Once that decision is made and the documentation's made, it's kept on file. The regulation also provides guidelines for classroom copying of books and periodicals, as well as music. The Teach Act. So as I mentioned up at the beginning, this is another tool in the teacher's arsenal, in addition to fair use. The Teach Act was enacted in 2002 by amending the copyright law. It updated the copyright law by removing impediments to the use of new technology in teaching. And before 2002, when it was enacted, electronic transmissions of copyright-protected material fell outside the education exemptions found in the law because those exemptions were explicitly limited to face-to-face classroom activities. In the policy, there is basic, basic language on the premise of the Teach Act. Again, it expands an educator's ability to use works that are copyright-protected in digital teaching materials without first having to obtain permission from the copyright owner. It covers materials prepared for remote or online learning used by students enrolled in the courses, and that's important. So it's limited to the, to the students that are enrolled in the course. And it can also be used taught in a traditional setting, as well as in distance learning. There are numerous criteria, however, that are listed in the Teach Act that have to be met in order to use the exemption. And those criteria are listed in the regulation. Some of those criteria include that the material has to be provided under the direction or the supervision of the instructor, the teacher. Also, the material has to be integral to part of the curriculum. It can't be just used for entertainment purposes. Also, the material, the amount of the material that is used has to be comparable to that that's typically displayed in a, the physical setting, the pre-COVID setting, the live classroom. And there are also certain things that the Teach Act does not authorize. And that includes the use of works that are specifically created as distance-learning products. That basically means that we can't use materials that are normally licensed for online courses. For those materials, we have to actually obtain the appropriate license. Also, the Teach Act requires that the prohibits, I'm sorry, prohibits the use of works that one knows or has reason to believe are pirated copies. The next topic is works made for hire. As I mentioned at the beginning, there's some basic language in the administrative regulation about work made for hire, about the concept. But in this new policy and regulation, we provide great more detail. And just so the board knows, too, that the language we've included here about works made for hire is consistent with other LEAs' policies on this, including Baltimore and Montgomery Counties. The basic premise of a work made for hire set forth in the policy is that, when an employee creates a work within the scope of their employment, the board is the owner of that work. The policy also states that supplies, equipment, or materials that are created by an employee or employees in which they use the district's time, facilities, materials, et cetera, and as part of their job responsibilities, that's also the board's property. In the regulation, it sets out, we set out the factors that are to be considered when determining whether something is a work made for hire. And those factors are, does the board have control over the work? Meaning, was City Schools' equipment used? Was it done while the employee was on the job? Another factor is whether or not the board has control over the employee. Meaning, does City Schools control the person's schedule when the work was made? Does the district determine how the employee was paid? And lastly, the last factor would be is whether, what is the board's status in the nature or type of the work created? Meaning, is City Schools in the business of producing such types of works? The next topic is student work product. This section is based on Maryland law. The law states that the board cannot claim ownership or copyright to student work product. And student work product is defined in the policy. If a student's intellectual property is published by the district, we have to provide appropriate copyright notice, has to be affixed to that work. Eligible students, who are students who are, by definition, age eighteen or older, and parents of younger students are provided with an annual opportunity to opt out of the student's intellectual property being published, displayed, or reproduced. Based on feedback from the Policy Committee, we've added details to the regulation. First, saying, advising that schools have to determine if the parent or eligible student has opted out. The, we've also advised schools that that opt-out ability is provided in the annual directory information form. And if a parent submits that form, it has to be noted in Infinite Campus. We also added language in the regulation regarding a limited, that limited use of, by students of City Schools' trademark, such as a team mascot, a school's logo, et cetera, by the student would be permitted. In the Implementation Strategies section of the policy, we originally had the specific language regarding what should be or what needs to be included in future agreements and MOUs. That language has been moved to the regulation. And again, that language, the purpose of that language is to protect and delineate the copyrights, the ownership of copyright or intellectual property of the vendor and of City Schools. In the administrative, some separate sections in the administrative regulation, the idea of requesting permission to use copyrighted work. There's a short section in the regulation that advises that in some situations, permission will need to be sought from a copyright owner. Again, once again, we've added a reminder here to check to see if the material being sought is already available by subscription or license at the district. And we created a form since the policy committee meeting that includes a review and approval process. Also, the regulation includes a section on claims of copyright infringement that can be filed against the district. It, this section provides information to copyright holders who believe that they have a valid claim against the district that we've infringed their copyright. And the language in the regulation sets out steps, including the requirement that the, the claimant identify the material being used by the district that they believe is subject of the infringing activity. Showing, lastly, showing movies in schools. As we discussed with the policy committee, movies that are shown in conjunction with the curriculum are permitted. So for instance, these are examples that we used last month. If a history class is studying World War II and the Holocaust, it would be acceptable under copyright to show the movie Judgment at Nuremberg. However, let's say a teacher wanted to show something like Beverly Hills Cop as a reward to the students for good behavior or to celebrate the end of a successful school year. In that situation, because it's not related to the curriculum, a public performance license would have to be procured. So, we, we did create an instruction sheet for the public performance license based on the policy committee meeting. And that instruction sheet provides basic instructions on how to obtain a license. However, it's not definite that this is actually going to be necessary or the best way to proceed, given how tight budgets currently are. And it might just be that showing movies maybe should be limited to like PTA nights and fundraising situations. And lastly, just some update on feedback and collaboration. The Teaching and Learning Office of Media and Instructional Technology, as well as Library Services, all at North Avenue have reviewed the drafts and have provided feedback. And they've also, they have an, they've created an online learning hub where this guidance, guidance is currently available and additional guidance, such as the fair use worksheet, and if we use it, the public performance license where those documents could live. And I'll let Mr. Bailey, if he's still, if he's with us, talk about the feedback that they've received from fine arts teachers.
Yep. Good evening. My name is Josh Bailey. I'm the Director of Operations for the Office of Teaching and Learning. I was able to work with our fine arts staff to engage our fine arts teachers in an understanding of how fair use affects their practice. The fine arts staff reported back that visual arts teachers heavily rely on digital copies when displaying artwork in their classrooms, often through PowerPoint, and that music teachers are primarily using music that's available for free on the internet or that are copies from colleagues already obtained through fair use. So again, pointing to what Sally had mentioned is a cohesive need of understanding the policy and how it plays out. And our fine arts staff is prepared and able to house that, those resources and make sure that all of their teachers are aware of the policies and how it will manifest in their classrooms.
Thanks, Josh. And so the, that hub that I mentioned will also be a place where the list of the materials that are available to the district's teachers, that's where that list can live. So again, all the reminders that we provide in the policy and reg about looking to see what resources are already available, maybe purchased at the school level or at the district level, that will, for the district level, that information can live on this learning hub. Just the last two things, PCAB has been provided with the drafts and their feedback has been sought. Not sure if they're still holding virtual meetings, but if they are, we've asked that we be added to their agenda. And lastly, communication, the communications team has also provided feedback to us regarding trademark. And we'll continue to work with that office when the materials are approved. And I'd, I'd like to explore with them to, on the permission request form to see if possible, that can be made an online form in this day and age. And that's it. I apologize about the PowerPoint.
Are there any questions? This is, as I said, this is a first reader.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner McFadden.
Thank you. I just want to, Sally, Ms. Robinson, I just want to say thank you for the additions that you made after our policy committee meeting for first reader. And it's, it's cool to see these draft documents, both the fair use worksheet and the actual, the other form that is, that is there. When, when this comes back for a second reader, would it be possible for us to see all of the feedback that was received on this? Or at least from all of the groups, at least generally speaking? For example, maybe some key points from PCAB, key points from the fine arts teachers, all consolidated in one place for us to see?
Of course. Yes, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other?
As this is Commissioner, this Commissioner Richardson, as, as Sally, Ms. Robinson was talking, I was thinking about fine arts teachers. So I'm, I'm very glad that you reached out to those particular teachers to get some feedback. Because I felt like this would probably impact their work the most. And so I appreciate that.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, that was, I believe, a suggestion from Commissioner McFadden last month.
Okay, I don't see anyone else. Any other hand up or folks asking to speak? So thank you, thank you, Ms. Robinson. And as we said, this is a first reader. There will be additional opportunities for feedback. And this will come back to us next month, you said, correct? For second reader.
Hi all, I just want to interject really quick. This is Joe Strake of the CEO's office. I just sent the updated presentation to Christian to be posted on Board Docs. There was a little bit of a version control issue. So that, that presentation will be posted on Board Docs, made available to the public and to the board. So you all can review it at your leisure in advance of second reader. Thank you.
Thank you.
And board members, I just emailed it to you also.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks a lot. Okay, so we'll move on then to our next agenda item. And that is looking at the review for the, for the consent agenda. I'm going to just review the items. And as a reminder, board members, let me know if you would like to have an item removed. And if you do, please state your question for staff so that they will be prepared to respond. Item eight point zero one, PSRP contract extension. Okay. We are pulling item eight point zero two, the capital improvement program. This is because our, for our student to be able to vote with us. Item eight point zero three, FY twenty quarter four budget amendment request.
Can we pull it, please?
Yes, question?
And I guess my reason is to, to look at the, I guess it's really important now for the public to see the flow of funds and the, and the changing needs because of COVID.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twelve point zero one, Discovery Education. Twelve point zero two, Amplify Education. Twelve point zero three, Curriculum Associates. Fourteen point zero one, Second Gear LLC. Fourteen point zero two, Archangel Tablets LLC. Fifteen point zero one, BMC Services LLC, Denver Elick Incorporated, The Pool and Kent Corporation. Did I get them all? GE Tingle, Tignol Company and J.F. Fisher Incorporated. Fifteen point zero two, Colossal Contractors. Fifteen point zero three, also colossal contractors, it's also with Tito Contractors. Fifteen point zero four, Alliance Exterior Construction Incorporated, Coal Roofing Company Incorporated and Simpson of Maryland Incorporated. Fifteen point zero five, Sparks Quality Fence Company Incorporated. Fifteen point zero six, On Call Engineering Consulting Services. Fifteen point zero seven, On Call Architectural Consulting Services. Fifteen point zero eight, WB Mason Company Incorporated. Fifteen point zero nine, HVAC and Mechanical Systems Response Services. Twenty point zero one, Community Schools. Okay, so we have two items that have been pulled, eighteen point zero two and eighteen point zero three. We're going to move into public comment. Well, I'll come back again after public comment to see if based on any of that, board members may wish to add anything else, any, any other items to be pulled. And I believe we are following right on schedule. So we have some speakers from recognized groups who have the opportunity to speak for five minutes. And first, we have Zachary Taylor representing the Baltimore Teachers Union. Mr. Taylor?
Hello, good evening. I'll just start real quick by noting briefly that today's New York Times has a story indicating that the expected fall surge of coronavirus community spread has begun and is starting to appear in the national data. And there are reasons to be particularly cautious in the coming weeks as our country continues to be among the most vulnerable for a variety of reasons. And unlike other countries, we still lack a comprehensive national plan for testing, tracing, and isolation. And the BTU continues to emphasize that if school safety and student and teacher health were a priority in the United States and in Maryland, we would see indoor dining and other super-spreader activities significantly curtailed, led by elected officials in hopes of securing safety for those who must engage in work indoors. But in recent weeks, the opposite has happened here in Maryland and elsewhere. And we are greatly worried about this and will continue to press for rigorous safety measures, including where a lot of the attention is right now on ventilation systems and what aerosol spread looks like. Throughout the summer and into the fall, we've heard district leadership many times refer to something that they would consider looking back on and taking feedback on. And we heard it again this week during a staff town hall, or last week, rather. And this was specifically around the question of school schedules and revising them as the year progresses and being open to comments. BTU has been engaged in a number of forums with teachers and parents. And together, we have all asked for more reasonable schedules as students across all age groups are spending too much time in front of screens. Many of our students are struggling to maintain attention and stay alert because they're in front of computers for so many hours of the school day, sedentary, stuck in their seats, isolated. We need school system leaders to really take a look and refocus so that these schedules are more humane for everyone. And we've heard from parents that too much screen time has led to significant problems for children when it comes to sleep, attention span, and energy levels. And this ranges from young kids to older, mature teenagers. And while academic synchronous schoolwork has sometimes been compared to the screen time that young people already spend or engage in on their phones and TVs and video games, we know that this is a false comparison. Young people watching TV or texting on their phones is not equivalent to engaging in rigorous academic lessons on computer screens in which students are applying upper-level thinking while academic skills are being taught by their teachers. These, these just aren't the same, and we can't think of them the same if we're trying to address this problem. Currently, our schedules require more synchronous time than any other Maryland school system. And now that we're several weeks into the school year, we need to revisit the workloads that are happening synchronously by students and teachers and introducing more asynchronous instruction and creating clearer guidelines for student assignments is one way to help address this. If we can make more reasonable schedules, we can produce better outcomes with higher student engagement and more time for teachers to plan lessons, provide academic feedback, and individually connect with parents and students, which I know a lot of the individual connections are very strong in some areas and then are lacking in others. And, and we need more time built in for that. Currently, teachers are overwhelmed with All That Must Be Done. Teachers are engaging with seven hours of screen time every day during just the typical workday, with the vast majority of that being spent leading instruction. And then they spend another three to five hours in front of computers and honestly, in some cases even much more than that, planning lessons, grading papers, providing student feedback, and fulfilling all the many documentation requirements that are part of distance learning. A single day per week of asynchronous instruction, as is common in many of Maryland's largest school systems, would greatly benefit teachers in maintaining morale and creating high-quality lessons and providing structured time to complete All That Must Be Done. A day of asynchronous instruction would also benefit our young people, allowing them to focus on their homework, class projects, and any additional asynchronous assignments they are given, and possibly reaching out and having small group meetings with both their fellow students, but also with other teachers. We also continue to ask the board to utilize the Great Minds videos that the, that the district has already purchased for asynchronous instruction, which could help support these structures. And as always, we seek a collaborative process with meaningful guidelines that are put in writing and clear to all the educators and city schools' families as well. If we do this together, it will work better for everyone. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Our next speaker from the Parent Community Advisory Board is Ms. Rachel Duncan.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Good evening, Commissioners, Dr. Santelisus, and the many members of our school communities watching online. I am honored to serve as secretary this school year for the Parent and Community Advisory Board, known as PCAB of Baltimore City. So usually as secretary, you can find me not speaking, but on mute while I'm typing furiously, trying to capture everyone's energy and enthusiasm from this year's board. Of our fourteen board members, nine of us, including myself, have started our work with PCAB just this calendar year. And so we're teaming up to bring a beginner's mind and fresh perspective to the work. We're committed to our role as an accountability partner to the district and to our responsibility under Maryland state law and district policy, both to engage in the district policy development process and to inform district procedures and practice. PCAB members aren't just here to talk about policies and procedures, though. We share a vision for the children of Baltimore City to have equitable access to everything that they need to succeed in school and life. That said, there are only fourteen of us on the board, and our job is not just to voice our own views as a diverse group of family and community members, but to lift up the voices of the thousands of other family and community members out there whose successes and failures are inextricably linked with the well-being of the people inside and outside our school buildings, be they, whether they're bricks and mortar or virtual as they are now. PCAB should be a mechanism for family engagement in educational decision-making, including but not limited to decisions related to policy. We will take an active role in reaching out to families to encourage and support them to understand district decision-making processes. Our hope is to increase the level of family engagement in these district processes. For this reason, I'm taking this opportunity- For this reason, I'm taking this opportunity to ensure members of the public know how to engage with PCAB and feel both invited and encouraged to be part of our work advising this body as it makes policies on behalf of all students. So first off, please connect with PCAB on social media. You can find us on Facebook at BCPSPCAB and now on both Instagram and Twitter at BCPSSPCAB. We are an all-volunteer board, and we don't have a budget for social media. But what we do have is a very passionate communications committee who is working to engage us with the public on all of these channels. So please follow, share, like, dislike, comment emojis, but tell us your thoughts and give us your questions. These are vital channels for us to hear from families and community members and to be able to incorporate what we hear from you into our testimony at meetings like this or in other forums. Just to give you an example, PCAB is gathering family and community feedback as we speak on how the MTA cuts proposed for January affect your family, your child's education, and equitable access to education for city students overall. Go to our Facebook page. It'll be the first post you see. Take the survey. It's in both English and Spanish and make your voice heard. Second, please join us for PCAB public meetings, the first of which will be in two days, this Thursday, September 24th, at 6:30 PM on Facebook Live or Zoom. The best way to access that meeting is through the PCAB Facebook page, which again is facebook.com/BCPSPCAB. Any proposed new or revised district policies come through the public PCAB meetings for family and community feedback. So we need members of the public to participate in order to make an impact. Otherwise, it's just a rubber stamp. Beginning in October, meetings will be the third Thursday of every month. But for September, we are meeting a week later, this Thursday, in two days, to allow the school year to get up and running. So that's Thursday, September 24th, 6:30 PM on Facebook Live. And finally, we know that not everyone is on social media and not everyone can join a Thursday evening meeting. We still want to hear from you. You can find our email address on the Baltimore City Schools website by typing "PCAB" into the search bar. And that email address is pcab@bcps.k12.md.us. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. And we also like to say to you and to PCAB that the board really wants to partner well with you as you attend our meetings. So we will be having board members who will be also attending PCAB meetings, upcoming PCAB meetings, and hopefully be able to be a part of the feedback and dialogue with you. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm now going to turn it over to our board executive, Mr. Gant, for additional public comment.
Thank you, Chair Chin. First, we have Chris Barron. Is Chris Barron on?
Yes.
Okay, you're up. You have three minutes.
Great, thank you very much, and thanks all for listening. My name's Chris Barron. I teach at the Mighty Patterson High School over in East Baltimore. And I also worked this summer with the Design Camp with Baltimore City Schools. And I wanted to share just briefly the results of the working group that I was in, which was tasked with developing strategies for virtual learning. Our group of select students and teachers worked to create a recommendation. We took about a week to do it. And so were several other working groups that had actions that were directly actionable for teachers and students. But our group's recommendation, which was actually about the length of the school day, I think is something that I wanted to make sure I at least shared with you. Our suggestion amounted to essentially more limited class time, three forty-five-minute, you know, synchronous classes a day with more asynchronous time outside of that to give time for feedback and creating quality lessons and so forth. I think there is an assumption sometimes people make that less school time means less learning or lowering expectations. Our group's conclusion was the opposite. And that was based on teacher and student experiences in the spring, that more limited screen time would reduce stress, increase learning, and increase quality overall. The schedule that we came up with, we didn't know at the time, but synchronizes exactly with the recommendations that were subsequently made by the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards of about three to four hours a day of synchronous instruction for high school students. I'm hearing a lot of things from colleagues, both in my school and at other schools, that confirm my experiences and our group's recommendations. Consider just for a second a day where you're in meetings for about eight hours. And then after that, you've got to come home, prepare for the next day of solid meetings that you will run, make phone calls, follow up with students, grade, create digitally engaging content, and so forth. It's tough on people, on teachers and on students. I'm worried about Baltimore facing an even greater teacher shortage in the short and long term. I'm worried about seeing more students burning out. I teach all AP classes, and I've got committed and engaged, excited students that are struggling and stressed out just with the amount of synchronous time that we've got. And so I worry about less engagement and more emotional struggle and stress for our students. I just wanted to share with you the recommendations. I have a PowerPoint that I can send with our group's formal sort of presentation on constructing school schedules as you kind of consider what you're going to do for the next upcoming weeks and months. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Next, we have a video from Tyrone Barnwell from the Teachers Democracy Project that I'll show.
I'm a single mom of a kindergarten student and a second grade student. For my kindergarten student, it's a lot harder to sit and just look at a screen for even an hour, let alone four or five. So it's tougher. It's really, really tough. It is. And she's retaining some information, but not enough. I'm reteaching sometimes what she's already learned because she's not absorbing it.
My son just started virtual kindergarten at the Mount Washington School. Even with a good teacher, it's been a tough few weeks trying to keep our son engaged. We have to have a family member with him the entire time. And even with that, our son is stressed out. We've had a few tears. We've tried many different approaches to keep him engaged, something that our preschool teacher said was never a problem before.
Parents are really considerate, and some have already started the process to withdraw their kid, to withdraw their babies from the public school system.
I've decided during this time it's better for us to be out in nature together when we can be together, since this is the only interaction he's having with other humans right now. And it wasn't beneficial for him to be on Zoom calls, in my opinion, at the age of five. I think learning happens through more interactive play.
His life's stressful. I work at night, three nights a week, twelve-hour shift as a secondary student. I see for his feet. And it's difficult because he isn't able to touch, actually be touched, because his advice doesn't work, such as the tissues. So they can't hear how much he can respond to her answers. I had to type in every answer that he needs to give in. So given the night that I get off of loose, I'm having an LBP up for the six hours with her, teaching her classes.
I actually have a daughter who has a eye condition which really makes it hard for her to stare at the screen for a very long time, and it begins to give her a headache.
I would like a project, you know, that we can do that it takes a week of hard to do instead of the everyday thing. She is exhausted.
If there was a way that they could incorporate the things that interest children of this age, their social media like YouTube or TikTok or things like that that they're interested in, if they could incorporate it into the lesson somehow, I believe that that would keep their interest a little longer.
And also, even for high school and middle school students, too. I think there need to be more breaks. My daughter's in school from 8:15 in the morning till 3:45 in the evening with a half an hour lunch break off of spring.
Okay. Okay, that was the last member, that was the last public comment. Sign up. Before we move on, do I want to make your way of error made that Mr. Sykes unfortunately can't vote on 802 because there's budgetary implications? So the consent agenda outside of 803 can just be voted together. So apologies for that.
Thank you. So I'm going to go back to the consent agenda. Is there a request, any other request to remove 8.02? If not, it will go with the full consent agenda. Okay. So if that's the case, then the only item that is pulled is 8.03. So first, I'm going to ask for a for a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda minus that one item that has been pulled, 8.03. Is there a motion?
Summell Roberts.
Commissioner Roberts, is there a second?
Second, Bundima.
Thank you. And those in favor, Commissioner Bundima?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so there are no opposed. So that's, this motion carries a seven in favor and two absent. Now, we'll go back to item 8.03, which was the Budget Amendment Request, just asking for some information about the flow of funds and the needs due to the COVID crisis.
Yeah, because the pages are stuck out for me for the group, especially pages eight and nine. And I think Chris can help us with that.
Okay. Mary Ann Cox, the Deputy CFO. I'm going to be presenting the FY20 Quarter Four Budget Amendment this evening for board review and approval. So we do this Quarter Four Budget Amendment for a number of reasons. The first, of course, to submit for board approval, the budget amendments that had been submitted by the schools and cost centers, you know, as they went through their normal process. So anything that happened after 3:31 through 6:30 at the various cost centers would be included here because remember, there are approval queues for internal budget amendments. But the ultimate approver is the board. And there's another purpose for doing the FY20 Quarter Four Budget Amendment. And that is because it's a requirement as part of our annual audit process. There is a schedule in our audit report that is the General Fund Non-GAAP Budgetary Basis Schedule Revenue Expenditures and Changes in Fund Balance. And what that does is it shows the original adopted budget for the general fund and the final one. And then the auditors trace those changes, those board-approved changes through the various quarterly budget amendments. So they must be approved by the board before inclusion in our annual audit report. Just a note here, there was a FY20 budget increase during the fourth quarter, which was a supplemental appropriation, which was submitted to the board on 5/12 and approved by the board that day to allow us to record some additional funding that we received from the city of Baltimore. All right. So Joe, if we could have the next slide. What we typically do with the budget amendments, the quarterly ones, is we give the reasons for some of the larger budget amendments. So in this case, you can see that the supplemental appropriation, that 2.1 million that we got from the city of Baltimore, we applied it to instruction. Okay? And then we had a Category Rebalancing Act, which is something we do at the very end, which is to bring our funding into line with some of the actual expenditures as they occurred. One instance is that you see the debt service increased by $1 million. So because of the way our debt service payments were made, there was an additional need to add money to the sinking or to record money that was deposited into the sinking fund. So that's what, that's the sinking fund for our 2009 and 2011 Quality School Construction Bonds. Instruction decreased by $5 million. And the other offset was mid-level administration increased by $4 million. And some of that was to accommodate the reallocation of expenditures that were originally recorded in Category 0201 Administrative to Mid-Level. And then you can see that the third one on this page is there was a $1.4 million increase to instruction for power cords related to COVID-19, and that was funded by a benefits decrease in fixed charges. So Joe, could we have the next page? Then, again, COVID-related, these major budget amendments show over and over again the unusual expenditures that we had in the fourth quarter that were the result of the school closures and COVID and all the actions we had to take related to that. So you can see here that there was $1.3 million moved to maintenance of plant for facilities overages, which was funded by a decrease in special education. But those increases in the maintenance of plant related to, you know, the personnel costs, all those things that came into play because of city schools' reaction to COVID-19 and what we needed to do. And that was a little bit associated with the one right underneath that, where we had $610,000, which was reallocated to operation of plant for PP&amp;E. So again, COVID-related. So Joe, could I have the next page? When we present the category amendments, we do three for categories and objects. The first one is the Combined Central Office and Schools Budget Amendments. Okay, so you can see there that the net at the bottom should be that lovely $2.1 million because generally, we don't have increases as we go through the budget year. The only way we can get increases is by supplemental, which is what we had for the city of Baltimore additional funding. But the rest of the money were the pluses and minuses, which I just described, you know, on the rationale for this, you know, the operational, you know, the facilities overages, the money that we needed to put in for the power cord, facilities, PP&amp;E, you know, all of that. That's what this is. That's why you see the money moving from one to another. So following behind this is the one, which is Central Office. And you can see when you go down to the bottom just for Central Office. Joe, could I have the next screen, please? Seldom does money get added to the Central Office Cost Centers throughout the year. It's extremely unusual. Whenever any additional money comes in, it goes to the schools, which is what you'll see in the next slide. So you can see that that $2 million, when we got that money from the city of Baltimore, it went to the schools, you know, as it should. But you can see the increases here, you know, the money for the Chromebook devices and the power cords and the PPE. You know, that money was recorded at the school level. So that's what these category amendments do, because we needed to put the money there so that we could spend it there. So Joe, could I see the next one? Now, these are at the objects level. Remember, we get our budget amendments two ways. The first is the category, and that is, you know, not only for general information, but it's also to comply with COMAR, which requires that you cannot spend more in an MSD category than you have appropriated. But the one that most people are familiar with are the changes by object. So here we have changes by objects. So you can see there that we moved four million dollars to supplies and materials at the school level, actually, to purchase the Chromebooks related to COVID nineteen. Then the next one is the category rebalancing that we had to do to fund the additional debt service related to the sinking funds for our two thousand nine and two thousand eleven bonds. Then the funds were moved for distance learning power cords. You can see, again, supplies and materials increased by one point four million, and we funded it from fringe benefits. So, okay, thank you, Joe. And then again, an increases for supplies and materials. We for six hundred and ten thousand, the this was to allow us to purchase the the P P E, you know, related to COVID nineteen. Same thing with with the next major category. We moved one point three million dollars from other charges to contractual services to fund the facilities overages, again, mostly related to the COVID nineteen response. And and then the last one here is funds needed for the senior packet printing related to COVID nineteen. That was another three hundred and ten thousand. So you can see when you look over the major budget amendments by category and object, most of them were aimed with the with the COVID nineteen response. And again, this is the one where we spoke about earlier. This is the supplemental appropriation that came from additional funding from the city of Baltimore. So while we charged it to instruction in the object, we put it in transfers so that that could allow us to pull the money from there for the individual schools as it was needed. So
Marianne, can I can I add a comment?
Certainly.
I was just going to add to the excellent overview that this is really a preview of more of these to come. That, of course, this period in question was one April through thirty thirty June. And we we did as we did the the moving both within categories and within objects to do all the things that Commissioner Reed noted. It was it was a litany of COVID-related movements. And that is, you will see it again in the first quarter of FY twenty one because, of course, by the time COVID hit, our FY twenty one budget was had been approved and was, you know, was set. So there will be at least this much intercategory, interobject movements. And they will almost always be movements that the board is all already aware of. Sometimes the wording might be a little bit different, like I'm not sure if power cords in this case, you know, rang a bell, but it was part of getting devices and connectivity. And as as Deputy Chief Cox mentions, a lot of the reporting format is dictated by COMAR. But it's it's of a piece with the other briefings that we've given on repurposing, I guess is the word that we're using more often, repurposing funds wherever possible. And so just to add that these were a lot of movement and it's it's only going to get more busy in quarter one of FY twenty one and quarter two. And just wanted to add that to Marianne's overview.
Yes, exactly. Thank you for that clarification. You're right, this these are signs of things to come. So again, for the for the budget amendments that are submitted for board approval, again, we get three for each set. These are the ones by object. And this one is the combined one. And as we as we spoke before, you know, the the money from wages and salaries, we we had a four million dollar decrease for phone for Chromebooks and a million dollar decrease for the debt service for the oh two hundred. We had a one point four million dollar decrease for the power cords and a six hundred and ten thousand dollar decrease for P P E. Now, in the oh three hundreds, which is contractual services, we had an increase of one point three for the facilities and another three hundred and fifty thousand. But again, if you look through the individual budget amendments, the first one is the summary. The second one is for central office and the third one is for the schools. And like I said, you will rarely see money leaving the schools to go to central office. It goes the other way. So are are there any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Marianne, yes.
Thank you.
So with that, is there a motion to approve item eight point zero three, which is the budget amendment request for quarter four, FY twenty quarter four?
So move, Ron Reed.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed, is there a second?
Second, Robert.
Commissioner Roberts?
Richardson, second.
Okay, thank you. Those in favor, Commissioner Bundima?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah.
And I'm in favor. So that is this this motion passes seven in favor and two absent. Thank you. All righty, so at this point, we have back to another information and discussion item. We have a presentation from the Office of New Initiatives for the charter applications for the opening for opening in school year twenty one, twenty two.
Good evening, my name is Trevor Roberts. I'm a specialist in the Office of New Initiatives.
You think I've become expert with the mute button?
Tonight, we're going to be presenting
Hey, sorry, hold on for a second. Sorry, I'm having a little bit of a tech issue. So Angela Alvarez, I'm the executive director of the Office of New Initiatives.
Tonight, we're going to be presenting for information applicants from organizations proposing to open charter schools. On an annual basis, city schools takes applications from outside organizations who would like to propose charter schools. Our normal application deadline is in March of each school year. This year, that coincided with the shutdown due to COVID nineteen. So we delayed the application deadline until August tenth and eleventh and took applications on those days. We received two applications, which we'll go over tonight. When we receive applications, the first thing we do is put them through a technical review process. That's just checking them to make sure the applications are complete and ready to go on to the next level of the review. Both our applications tonight passed that technical review process and went on to review by the charter and operator-led schools advisory board. The advisory board is an a group of internal and external stakeholders who advise the CEO on issues surrounding charter schools and other operator-led schools. The advisory board conducted their review and presented their recommendations to the CEO. And tonight, we are going to just present the applicants and give a brief overview of the programs that they're proposing. The next step in the process after that is going to be a board work session, which is going to take place on October sixth from six to seven P M. That is going to be the applicant's opportunity to give their presentations directly to the board and to the public and take questions from the board at that time. Also, at that work session, the CEO's recommendation on the applications will be presented to the board. Following that, if there are any changes to the recommendation based on the work session or from any supplementary information that applicants can present after the work session, if there's a change to the CEO's recommendation, that change will happen during that time. And the final recommendation will be presented to the board on October twenty seventh. And the board will take their vote on the recommendations at that time. So if there are no questions?
One thing, hold on for a second. One thing I want to add, just for transparency for the public, we did when we experienced the the closure due to COVID, we did put a request before the state board to actually not be not be able to waive holding or receiving applications during this time because of the complexity of the work with like we're in virtual learning, just a lot happening. But the state board did not grant us the waiver. And so that's why we moved forward with the receiving applications in August. So I just also want to make sure that that is clear as well.
Okay, thanks. The first application we received was from Life Preparatory School Incorporated to to open a charter called Life Preparatory Public Charter School. This charter would be a conversion of two current neighborhood schools, James Moser Elementary and Calverton Elementary Middle. They'd be converting those two schools to charter status and combining them into a single school with dual campuses. The academic programming that they're proposing is a STEAM B curriculum. That's science, technology, engineering, arts, math, and business. And they believe that this curriculum would prepare students for success in the twenty first century community. And to implement that curriculum, they'd be using experiential learning involving end-of-year projects, field trips, and immersion in technology. And this would identify and build individual student strengths.
I think there was a question, so I saw a hand go up, sorry.
Yes, it's Bundima, thank you, Angela. I just had one question. Could you give me not all of the reasons, but one of the main reasons that the state board rejected a delay in presenting these schools, the charter schools, new charter schools? Or can you say that right now, or you want to wait?
No, I think, I mean, I think that's a good so much has happened, do I remember the rationale strongly, just to be honest. But can I come back to that at the end? Let me pull it up.
Yeah, you can. I'm just very curious to see why they, in a pandemic, they would they would
require us to move forward. Yeah, yeah, let me let me refresh my memory while Trevor presents the next call. And I'll come back to you.
Thank you.
The second application that we received this year was for Baltimore Curriculum Project. They're proposing to convert Pimlico Elementary Middle School to charter status. E C P is an operator, they of current charter schools, they currently operate five conversion charters throughout the district. And they have been working with the Pimlico community for two years now to improve the climate at the school. B C P is a is a leader in restorative justices practice. So they've been bringing their expertise in that to Pimlico. So they are now applying to convert the school to become the full-time operator of that school. Their academic model focuses on direct instruction, reading, and math programs and has individualized acceleration schedules to accommodate students where they are academically, whether they're on grade level, below grade level, or above grade level. So it's an individualized program for for students.
Just two things, too, just to make sure everybody and all members of the public are aware. Both applications are for schools that are part of the Twenty First Century Plan. Pimlico having recently opened in its new facility within the last year and a half. And Calverton and Moser will open in their new facilities in the fall of twenty one. So I just wanted to make sure that we stated that on the record. Commissioner Bundima, and answer to your question about why the waiver was not granted, they basically said that they that there was no, they didn't have the ability to grant such a waiver. And you know, that we that basically we had to move forward. They didn't really speak to our concerns when we like talked about COVID. They basically said they could not that there wasn't a provision in the law that allowed the state board to grant a waiver from that requirement.
That's interesting because this is the first time in, I guess, in the history of this world or this country that we've had a situation like this, so it would not be in the laws.
Right.
So it could be created to address the issue. And that's what I was thinking, even though it wasn't there because because of the new situation, it would seem to me that it could be a special grant to, you know, special consideration because of the situation we're in right now.
Yeah. No, I think that's right. I mean, they do acknowledge that the governor's executive order allowed them to consider waivers that weren't, you know, thought of at the time related to COVID. But that they basically, they didn't say a lot. They basically said they declined to entertain a waiver for this for this. So they said it's not contemplated in the law. And even though the executive order would give us the ability to contemplate it, we declined to do so. It's basically what they said. It was a very short decision from them.
I think that we ought to look further, but thank you, Angela.
So we what we did, you know, when we had considered the waiver, we had talked about this with legal. So what we did was to make sure we had a path to move forward because there was there was thinking that they might not grant it. And so we wanted to make sure we could move forward with if we needed to, which we did and have been able to.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to reiterate for the board and the public that the next public step in this process is the board work session on October sixth. That starts at six P M. It's open to the public and it'll be held virtually like this meeting. And you'll be able to find a link to that meeting on the district website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other any other questions that the board members, I think that's pretty clear. Okay, so October sixth will be the presentations. And we also next have a presentation on a first reader for policy K D D media relations.
Greetings, members of the board. This is Andre Riley. You can't see my face, but trust me, I am here. I'm pleased to be here tonight to talk about the next frontier in media relations for Baltimore City Public Schools. Some of you on the policy committee have seen the data that I have in front of you. But for those of you who haven't, this is, I would say, a fifty thousand foot view of where we are in media relations in city schools today. I'm not really going to dig into any of these numbers, but I want to give you some big ideas about the type, the volume of work that we face in molding the image of city schools and in working with our media partners. The media request number, I will tell you, that number changes every day. Today, we we grew by six, with six additional requests. That's why I put an asterisk on it because it's always going to end up changing. But before we can talk about E F L A to media relations, this is why a policy like this would be important because we're doing a lot of work. And we need to build some guideposts to make sure we're all on the same page and reacting to media in a way that benefits our organization and ultimately those folks that we serve. Our next slide, please. Okay, in the communications office, everything we do is about relationships, about managing the relationships of the district. So we're ensuring that it's just not us providing information, but creating the types of bonds that enable folks to A, want to work with us and to do some of the things that we're asking them to do, behavior change. And when we're talking about media, it's a desire to build the type of relationship that will help them to cover us, to know that we are a credible source of information. And when we need support in getting an accurate message out there, we will have had the types of previous background in history where we can be great working partners. We focus our media relations on five points. We always want to be accurate, transparent, and clear. Good or bad, right or wrong, sunny or cloudy, whatever. Whatever comparison you like to make, that's the goal, to be accurate, transparent, and to be clear. We want to have structure in how we respond. Right now in city schools, we all want to work with media and that means from the school level all the way up to the CEO's chair. But there are different ways of going about it. We don't have a universal structure. And I'll explain why that causes us problems in just a little bit. The third is we want to meet our board mandated position of providing publicly accessible information. We have legal responsibilities in providing that information. And we just have responsibilities as good public servants to make sure that whatever we share with our greater community, that everyone can access it regardless of language, location. If you're a member of the Baltimore City Public Schools audiences, you need our information. I want proper context. For our fourth bullet, for those of you who've seen some of our news coverage on certain stations who I'm not going to name in this space because we're all having a great day today. Everything we share, provide, has a measure of context. And if I have a great working relationship with media, I'm able to share that context. If I don't, they're not listening and we run the risk of them sharing information with our audiences that's either just flat out wrong or without the nuance that really gives them a great picture. And the fifth one, I was told by superintendent long ago, the best thing that two people can have is an understanding. When we deal with our media partners, policy KDD will give us that mutual understanding. So no matter what happens, we both understand the rules. We both understand how we're going to advance our individual missions. Next slide, please. Okay, policy KDD and this regulation, it's really an employee-centric policy. Again, to go back to my, the previous slide and how we respond to media, most of our information comes from the employee side, whether it be just straight up answering a question, someone contacting the CEO and saying, how many students do you have? To items that are more complex, such as why do students sign in to Zoom? Why do you require that? Though information comes with our employees and there are number one spokespeople. If we can get our 10,000 employees on the same page, that's 10,000 spokespeople who understand where we, where we are. So in relation to media, I want to have a, a policy that kind of gets everybody in that framework to understand their roles and their responsibilities. I highlighted who responds to media requests because that is the preemptive question in the organization. I don't see it as a question. I'm not sure. Some folks in North Avenue see it as a question. But as I work with our schools, I definitely think they don't have a clear picture. Again, we're talking about relationship management. How we support media relations in an emergency? Lord forbid a crisis level event comes to our organization. If you know your roles and you know your responsibilities, then we can manage anything that comes about. We want to also protect an employee's personal information and their right to free speech. Maryland is a very big state on free speech. I think they all are, but since I've been here in Maryland, I've seen an additional emphasis on that. So we want to make sure that employees know there are instances where they, they can speak to media, where they can share information, that we're not just locking them in to an all or nothing approach. And for this policy, it does not apply to charter schools, but again, it applies to our employees who work at those locations. Next slide, please. Next slide. This doesn't appear to be going my way. So I think I can help with this.
The slide has moved, Andre.
Oh, okay. There we go. Thank you. Can you go back one? Okay, sorry about that. Got a little bit off, off task, but now we're back in the saddle. Okay, now go forward one slide. There we go. Thank you. All right, to the point, policy KDD and its regulations, it impacts our employees, but it also again sets those relationships with our media partners. On the media side, you see a lot of, again, relationship items where we talk about giving them clarity about where to go to get information. They know how and when they can enter our property. Who's our spokesperson? How can they get clear information to be sure that we're not hiding things, that we're being open and honest with them? And it provides them an environment where they're all treated respectfully. And that last bullet is important for media outlets because as we, we advance more into the 21st century, journalism has changed. We've gone more from the bricks and mortar Baltimore Sun TV stations to anybody who's walking down the street with a camera or a cellphone is in some ways a journalist. And we need to be able to provide an environment where our district treats everyone with the same level of respect media-wise. And this includes our student journalists who by all means, if we all communicate with somebody, it should be the folks we're training to be journalists in the future. For our employees, it gives them those guideposts. How do you respond to media requests? If you need, if you want to seek media coverage for your good news, how do you do it? What standards do we have to protect student and employee privacy that are already defined by board policy? KDD will support that and give it more of a backstop. We also remove the burden from individual employees from conducting media relations activities. A little bit earlier, I mentioned everyone understanding their roles when it comes to media relations. Well, one thing we work to define in KDD is, as a communications office, it's our job to manage media, which allows our employees to do their respective jobs better, with greater focus. So if a reporter comes up to someone at a school level and says, give me some information about that, instead of that person looking up that information, you pass the ball to communications and we take care of that. And that allows our employees to be the best they can be. And the final bullet is we want to make sure our work is always accurately portrayed and in context. This policy gives us a way that if we follow the rules and everyone stays within their positions, that they will understand that we're able to portray information in the best way possible. Next slide, please. We have five core standards in KDD. The first is only the CEO or her designate is the official spokesperson for city schools. To that main point about if I'm a media member, where do I go to get information? Well, you can, the CEO is the person who speaks on her behalf, but she delegates down through my chief, Tina Highcup, who in turn delegates down to the communications office. So with that, there's a clear chain of, if someone needs to speak for our organization, this is the way it will occur. In a similar manner, who shares our information? Schools educate kids and communications offices work well to share information on behalf of our organization. So if I'm a member of the media, I know that if I want to get clear information from city schools, I know where it's coming from. And as a school district, we know who's speaking or who's sharing that information on our behalf. The third bullet is even back to the time where I was beginning my time with city schools. We have a strong desire to share the great things that we do and we should. Our growth, our engagement depends on folks' understanding that we achieve outcomes that help them to be successful. And pardon me for that. So we're going to create a pathway where if you remember, if your school or staff member and you want to share good news, there's a method through communications to do so. And then we share that information with media. The fourth bullet, and I can't say this enough, we are wholly dedicated to providing, to protecting the privacy of our students and our staff. And finally, in an emergency, we have a defined and coordinated media response. Next slide, please. We are currently in the process of getting additional feedback and collaboration. I was glad to hear our friends at PCAB speak earlier in the meeting. We've reached out to them directly. We've also reached out to business, the business units you see above or see in front of you. But we're doing a lot more. We've reached out to our student board member. Hello, sir. It's good to see you. We've reached out to a group of principals that were selected at random to figure out how this policy will impact their work. And we've reached out to journalists themselves. A lot of that is ongoing. It's been pretty intense the last couple of weeks, but at the same time, we're moving forward. And we're going to make sure that we are touching as many individuals as we can that will be either impacted by this policy or that will find it useful. And that members of the board. Oh, finally. And here's some of the research references that we've used. We've looked at Maryland, we've looked outside of Maryland, we've looked at school districts that are larger than us. We've looked at school districts that are smaller than us, but largely urban school districts with the same issue. You're in a significant sized media market and you want to make sure that you're sharing information with the media that's effective, accurate, and contextual. So these are an example of who we reached out to. And the one at the bottom is probably the most significant, the National School Public Relations Association, of which I am a member. This is something we, we chat about all the time in our various professional development opportunities. And it really helped to inform our work here as we look to implement, hopefully, a policy in city schools. It helps us to be a little bit more successful. So with that said, I believe that is the end of. That is the end of my presentation. Is there anything I could share with you?
I don't, I'm looking for hands or. So Riley, you must have been really clear because everyone is just looking straight ahead. So I think we're okay. We'll be, we look forward to being a part of the feedback and coming to the second reader.
All right. I thank y'all a lot. Continue. Have a great day.
Thank you. Are there any board committee reports that folks would like, need to share this evening? Okay, see none. I want to ask Mr. Gann, if you'll put the slide up for us because as we started last time, we had, we indicated that we were going to use some additional time if, if our business portion, our main business ended before 7:30, that we would open the floor for what we're calling board member chat. So this is just a reminder of the guidelines that we have established for this chat. The board members and the CEO are part of this informal discussion. We are not trying to get into policy at this time, but this is just an open discussion. It will be for 20 minutes. This is not a public comment or interaction time. And we're not asking staff to be here to answer questions for us. Dr. Santalisis is one of the participants in this discussion and not really just to answer our questions. So at this time, I'm going to open the floor. If the board member has any item or issue that you would like to share or bring forth out as a conversation starter, the floor is open. I'm going to need, if I can get the, back to the screens, because I really can't. I need to see everyone if case. Or if you just say who you are and start talking would be okay.
It, it would help if, if we took this down, Christian.
Right.
Went back to.
Okay.
I had a little lag, so.
Okay. I don't have anything tonight. I'm not sure about my fellow commissioners. If there was any conversation maybe that prompted something for you from tonight's meeting, we can have, we can have dialogue, but yeah, I don't have anything tonight, Madam Chair.
Okay. This is the night that everyone is ready to, to go home and go to sleep. I see that.
That's exactly the night. Yes.
This is the night, right? It took two weeks of, of, of school to reach this night.
Chair, I will just say that the Council of Urban Boards of Education, the Q conference started today. I know Commissioner Roberts is also attending. And you know, I'm, in addition to, you know, teaching and board service here, I'm eager to hear what's happening in urban school districts around the country and how they're managing through the COVID-19 crisis, but how we're also looking into the future. One thing that I heard today was, you know, some learning on how school board members can support school districts by asking the right types of questions right now in our current context. So it's, it's a couple of more days that we have in the, in the conference. Hopefully Commissioner Roberts and I, when we meet on Thursday afternoon, will have an opportunity to just share our thoughts on the different sections, sessions. Because it's different, you know, being in a virtual conference, you know, like you, which is very, you know, interactive and you build strong networks with folks. It's challenging to do that in, in our current context, but we're pushing through just like we're expecting everyone else to push through in this challenging time. So I just wanted to let the board know that and the public know, you know, as, as we are you know, expecting for everyone in our system and organization to develop themselves and to fine tune their, their toolboxes. The Board of School Commissioners, we're doing the same thing. So we're hopefully leading by example. That's all I wanted to say with that. It's not like I have a lot. I too am ready to record my asynchronous lesson for my students to, to see tomorrow. So I'm ready for that. Curious though to hear from our student commissioner.
Okay, I was about to ask you, how's, how's it going, Commissioner Sykes? Turn your, um, your, can you turn the volume up? Because something's happening that we're not hearing you.
Commissioner, maybe take your earbuds out. I know that might help. Commissioner, maybe take your earbuds out. I know that might help.
And you're not on mute?
No. Okay.
And your volume is all the way up. And your earbuds are not plugged in, right? All right, sorry.
Commissioner Sykes, if you go to, let's see if we can try, if you go to the three dots.
All these teachers.
Click on the three dots, and you should be able to see device settings. Do you see that? And do you have any audio options there that are in device settings?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes. We've learned two things.
Listen, that's what we teachers are doing right now. We put on all the hats.
That's right.
So as I was saying, first of all, good evening to you all. I hope you all had a wonderful day. For me, as of right now, I'm really trying to just focus on, focus on school, honestly, and with the board as much as I can and try to keep up. But it, it is a faster-moving pace than I thought it would be. It's moving very quickly. I noticed a lot of the teachers, the teachers are working with us with time. I think time management is the big thing. I think that, you know, especially with me and my squad, Dumbo, we do have the periods where we have a break and we're able to work synchronously. So that's a big help, I believe. Also, you know, the async in this time is just like amazing for us, because, you know, even getting that break between the day to just work on those things for those two periods, when we get our asynchronous time, we get that, that time just to work and just to, you know, even if we have to communicate with the teachers. Getting that time is really, I think it's imperative for, for the students to understand to use that time, because once the school day is over, yeah, you, you know, you'll have the time to work. But I think getting the time done, doing the work during the school day is way better. That way, once you're home, you have way less to focus on. And on top of that, getting the time during the school day, it's time for you to do the homework. You know, you're not able to really do that in person. So being able to do, to do that, you know, inside that, that 45-minute break period, I think is very important for us to use to, to do so. So I say, that is something that I really appreciate. It's a few things that I'm working on myself, that I've been talking to with a few of the board members and Mr. Grant about working on. So I know one thing is for me is really reaching out to the community and letting the community know that I am here if you need my help, that the board is here. We are here to, you know, help as much as we can. So, you know, reaching out to the community is something that is, is near and dear to my heart, because it's something with, in Baltimore City, we really need. It's, it's people to understand that children like me and where I come from, that we are, we are here for each other. So I think that's something that I really want to work on. So that's, that's just a few of my things that I want to say tonight. So thank you.
A few of your things. Wow, you're making me tired just hearing a few. Thank you. Okay, I'm not, I'm not going to force folks to, to talk. I don't want you to think that I'm, you know, moving right along, but I sit through the day with a, a first-year middle school person who's at my house. So I've been, I've been sitting through lessons too, so I understand what the day is like. So if there, if there aren't other things tonight, I suggest that I give you the upcoming meetings and perhaps, yeah? Does somebody have their hand raised?
It's Ronald McFadden, just one, two last things. We just, to, I know that Commissioner Frank just commemorated Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year. I definitely want to, you know, just make mention of that. And to all of our community members that celebrated or commemorated that religious holiday, just want to acknowledge that. And then also, we are Hispanic heritage, ma. You know, as I, as I open each of my classes with all of, you know, my, my students of Hispanic heritage, this is the opportunity for us to celebrate, you know, the incredible culture and diversity that we have within our community. So I just wanted to make sure that we mentioned that before we adjourn this evening.
Okay, and I want to remind everyone, as you're doing all those things, like getting the immunizations caught up and, and making sure you have your devices, please be certain that you register to vote.
Question about immunizations? Can I ask a quick question about immunization? Dr. Santalisis, would families know, right, like, are they getting letters if their kid needs to be immunized? Or is it through their doctor or something like that?
Well, they, they should be getting notification.
Okay.
The school system that they, that we still need the immunization. But they, but most, most folks would either go to one of the local.
Okay. Okay. So on Thursday, this Thursday, September 24th, our Parents Community Advising Board is going to be meeting at 6:30. I don't know where the noise is coming from. Everyone muted now? Okay. Again, PCAB is Thursday, the 24th of September, 6:30. Teaching and Learning Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, October the 6th, at 3:30. Operations Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, October the 20th, at 10:30. The Policy Committee also meets on October 20th at 3:30. And then the next meeting for the board will be on Tuesday, October the 13th. Please remember the dates that we mentioned about the survey and the information about the strategic plan, October the 5th. There's also a meeting, Friends of the Blueprint, that will be occurring on the 24th. And, and all of these are virtual meetings. Encourage you all, if you care about schools and you care about our children, is to the extent that you're able, please be a part of these and join us. If there are no objections, I am going to adjourn the meeting minus a vote. Are there objections? I don't see anyone. Then I'm going to say that this meeting will be adjourned by consent, and I want to thank you all and have a very safe evening, and we will see you soon. Good night, everyone.